Hey everyone, welcome to our Kingdom Roads Bible study. Um, we are going to continue our intimacy series today as we are going to study Luke chapter 6 today. Um, I hope that you had a blessed week and I'm very excited to get into what God has for us today. Um, so let's go ahead and start with the word of prayer and then we can go ahead and discuss the, the chapter. Father God, we thank you so much for another day of life. We give you all the praise and the glory and the honor that only you deserve, Lord. You are the great I am. You are great. You are awesome. And we know that you fight for us and we thank you um, in advance for being such a great God and all of the things that we go through every single day, Lord. Um, I've asked that you forgive us of all of our sins, Lord, and wash us clean. And may you take anything not worthy of you within us, take it out, Lord, and do what you need to do within us. May your Holy Spirit abide, may your Holy Spirit rest, and may we be able to be intimate with you in all ways. In Jesus' name we pray, amen. Alright, so let's go ahead. Um, Luke chapter 6 is where we are studying today. Let's go ahead and get into that. Luke chapter 6, alright. So last week we talked about uh, the call of the disciples. The first were disciples that started to walk with the Lord. Um, um, Jesus also being um, able to cleanse a leper and he forgives and heals a paralytic. And a group of his friends who had a whole lot of faith were able to experience the power of Jesus. And, and then Matthew would becomes a disciple of Jesus. And his friends are, you know, having a moment with Jesus and eating and, and they're getting to fellowship with Jesus. And Pharisees come and they try to um, say that they're not worthy to be hanging with Jesus. And so, we talked a little bit about these things and you can check it out in our last session. Um, but today we're talking about um, Jesus again, which we're gonna go into his ministry a little bit deeper. And a lot of the things that he says, a lot of the things that he preaches and tells the multitudes of people that come to visit him. And we're gonna see what we can get out of it for ourselves today. So, I'm gonna go ahead and read the first five verses and then Stephanie, you can go ahead and read the, the next uh, five verses. So right now, we're starting off with verse 1. "Now it happened on the second Sabbath after the first, that he went out through the grain fields and his disciples plucked the heads of grain and ate them, rubbing them in their hands. And some of the Pharisees said to them, 'Why are you doing what is not lawful to do on the Sabbath?'" But Jesus answering them said, "Have you not even read this? What David did when he was hungry, he and those who were with him, how he went into the house of God, took and ate the showbread, and also gave some to those with him, which is not lawful for any but the priests to eat." And he said to them, "The Son of Man is also Lord of the Sabbath." So now Jesus comes and these Pharisees come once again and these people are very adamant. They're everything that Jesus is doing, they're scrutinizing it and they're questioning him. And Jesus, who is Lord of all, he's the Creator, and he's talking to them and they're questioning the disciples. Because disciples are simply just plucking grain from the fields. And they're trying to eat because they're hungry and all they're doing is plucking grain. And I'm sure it's as simple as, you know, taking their fingers and pulling up, pulling out a grain from the wheat. And so, here the Pharisees are and they're questioning, you know, why are you guys doing that? That's not lawful to do on the Sabbath, you know, it's, they're not supposed to sow. And you're not supposed to go and harvest or anything. You don't do any work. And now with the Pharisees in their mind, they're, they're seeing the plucking as work, the simple plucking. But these guys are hungry and they're also in ministry and they have to eat. And so here the Pharisees are judging these people and saying, "Why are you doing this? It's not lawful." And so Jesus said, right here he says to them, "Did you even know what David did back in the day? He also did something that was difficult and that was wrong in the eyes of the law." You know, he disobeyed the law, but it was for good. Now, these people were hungry. So I think the essence of what Jesus is trying to say is that, yes, we should still respect the Sabbath. He's not taking any um, any value away from it. And he's not trying to say that we should do whatever we want. What he's trying to say is, these people are just being so religious and so stick to the law situation. I can't find the right word, but it's more so they're not being able to recognize that it's good to, it is okay to do good on the Sabbath. And if you're hungry and you pluck something out of a grain and you take something to eat, you know, it's for a good reason. And Jesus is also saying that he is the Lord of the Sabbath. He's in charge of the Sabbath. He is the director. A Lord is someone who directs. A Lord is someone who guides. So he's the one who says what can and cannot happen. And he was with the disciples and he's letting these Pharisees know that I'm in charge. I, the Lord of the Sabbath. So if I'm allowing them to do that, you have nothing to say. And he shuts them up and lets them know that it's okay to do good. David took the bread from, the showbread from um, the tabernacle. He wasn't supposed to do that, but he did it because he was hungry and he was allowed to do that. And here another situation that happens again. And so we have to be-
Alright, hey guys, sorry about that. We had to continue the Bible study um, in a different uh, location. Okay, so we're gonna continue the Bible study from here because we had some issues earlier. Um, but uh, so we were studying Luke chapter 6 verses 42. And right here, we, we were talking about taking the speck out of our own eye before we start to tell someone else about what speck they have in their own eye. And so it's critical that we're not pointing the finger before we examine ourselves. It's important that we take the time to, you know, you know, examine yourself, talk to God. Take the moment to actually listen to what God has to say about our own lives and then try to make sure that we have a handle on our own sin. But it's important that if we're gonna go to someone, that we are patient with them, that we have a loving spirit, that we have a kind heart. And then we were, we talk to them and try to, you know, help them to change route as far as where they're trying to go. Um, in their, in their direction as far as their relationship with the Lord. So Jesus was saying here for us not to be hypocrites, to first remove the plank from our own eye and then we can see clearly to remove the speck that is in our brother's eye. Um, Stephanie, did you wanna add anything on to that one?
Um, I think you said anything.
Okay, alright. And then verse 43? Right, it's important for us to analyze ourselves and to make sure that we're in good standing before we go and we rebuke someone else. Um, and verse 43 says, "For a good tree does not bear bad fruit, nor does a bad tree bear good fruit." What do you think that means, Stephanie?
I guess like, you know, because you know how we always say like, you, you know a person by their fruits. So if your fruits are not, you know, ripe or, you know, growing, I guess, in a sense, you know, you're, you're plucking your fruits before they're ready. So if you're going out and, you know, telling other people about themselves, basically like, you know, how you, if you're not analyzing yourself, if you don't know your own fruits and you're trying to tell somebody about themselves and telling them like, well, why do you think you can talk to God when your fruits aren't even like, you're not even talking to him? But I'm gonna sit there and judge you.
Yeah. Well, if we look at the verse a little bit closely, it says, "For a good tree does not bear bad fruit." So we can, like you said, we can recognize a tree, we can recognize an individual by their fruit, by what they're saying, what comes out of their mouth, by their actions, how they relate to others, how they treat others. And you know, even body language, a lot of things can met, you can see things clearly about someone based off of the way that they are in, in um, conversation or in, in exchange with another individual. So a good tree, and we know the fruit of the Spirit is the main, is the main essence of what this is talking about. If someone doesn't have love, if they're not kind, if they're not patient, we know that that individual is not a good tree if they're not having these things. So you can judge a tree based off of what their fruit is, is what this is trying to say. "For every tree is known by its own fruit; for men do not gather figs from thorns, nor do they gather grapes from a bramble bush." So you're not just gonna go to any tree. You, like, you'll know if you planted a tree and you see that this tree is only, you planted a grape tree. Let's put it that way. You planted a grape tree and it's giving off peaches and giving off mangoes. That's not what you planted, was it? So it's giving off bad fruit. So you want to make sure that if you're calling yourself a Christian, that you have Christ-like attributes, that you look like Jesus when you walk, that you look like Jesus when you talk, that you're, that you are treating others with patience and love and you're long-suffering. In those moments, that's when you know that you resemble Jesus and that you're a good tree. So this is what this is trying to say. And then verse 45 says, "A good man out of the good treasure of his heart brings forth good; and an evil man out of the evil treasure of his heart brings forth evil; for out of the abundance of the heart his mouth speaks." Out of the abundance of the heart, the mouth speaks. Stephanie, what does that mean to you? Yeah, so the treasure that's in our hearts, we will, if somebody treasures something, guys, if somebody treasures something that, okay, let's put it this way. If somebody treasures money and that's all they think about all day, every day, what are their fruit gonna be? What is their actions gonna look like?
About money, like, you know, whatever is the pain, so it's like selfishness.
Yes, selfishness. What else?
You know, they're not, they're not humble, they're, 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 they have, basically have a one-track mind.
Mm-hmm, and they're greedy. They will, they will hurt anyone, right? They will do whatever it takes just to get to that means, that money. It doesn't matter whom they hurt in the, the crossfire. Yes, the works, it is the works of the flesh. Um, so in those moments, hello, these are my cousins on here, I'm excited. So it's awesome to see that when, you can know what the heart produces. If you see someone who is after a certain thing and you will hear it out of their mouth, you will, you will see it in their fruit and that's what this verse is trying to say. Out of the abundance of the heart, the mouth speaks. So if somebody is so focused on being in a relationship and all they do is talk about relationships 24/7 and they're so stuck on, you know, I just want a man, I just want a woman, and it, whatever it takes, you'll see that this person doesn't care about God, they don't love God, they don't wanna pray, they just wanna go out on dates, they just want to be around other, of their opposite sex. They're not focused on Jesus, they're focused on their flesh. They're focused on just that one thing that their heart desires so bad that they miss, they miss what they should be focused on in that moment, which is Jesus. And so we know that out of the abundance of the heart, anytime somebody has something on their heart that is so strong, you will know, it will come out of their mouth. Yes, they are not truly converted. So in those moments, you have to be careful, you have to be careful that whatever is on that, is on your heart, is not coming out and that people aren't looking at you in a way that you're not, you're, you know, they're, they're judging or maybe they're looking at you in a way that they're not pleased or maybe they don't even wanna be around you because you're just so focused and so treasured on things that are not good. And if your heart and your heart's treasure is Jesus overall, and Jesus is your overall treasure and you love Him, out of the abundance of your heart, the mouth will speak. People will see you giving to the needy, giving to the homeless. People will see you loving people that don't deserve love. You, you will be loving your enemies, you will be not, you won't be selfish, you'll be kind, you'll be long-suffering, you'll be patient with people. And these types of attributes will say, this person is the one that loves God because God is their treasure. That's all they talk about, all day, every day, it's all about God, it's all about the kingdom of heaven and going to heaven. And that person, you can tell what they focus on, what's on their heart all the time. And let's continue, we're gonna wrap up because we've been, we've been on since nine o'clock. And if you're brand new, this is your first time on Periscope. We actually have our weekly Bible studies that we hold on uh, YouTube every single Friday at nine o'clock PM. As we are no longer on, we used to have a, a power call where we always called in every Friday, but now we're gonna be transferring over as that line has now been charging people. Now we wanna go on Periscope and we're gonna start periscoping our Bible studies every Friday at nine o'clock PM. So I hope this is a blessing to you and hopefully you'll be able to join us um, consecutively within the weeks that are to come. So let's close out the Bible study. We're gonna continue with uh, Luke chapter 6, um, verse 46. And we're gonna finish the chapter with uh, verse 40 until verse 49. So Stephanie, do you wanna read verse 46 for us?
Sure.
Okay. You're welcome.
46, right?
Yes, uh, we're on verse 46.
Okay, and why I call you Lord, Lord, is in that the things which I say.
Wow, so wait, wait, stop right there, I'm sorry. So we were talking about earlier in verse uh, uh, verse 1, all the way down to verse 11, where Jesus in that section was saying that he is the Lord of the Sabbath. And we also talked about Jesus being the Lord, being Lord of our lives. And what Lord is defined as is someone who guides, who leads. He's also a shepherd, he's someone that you trust to guide you and direct you and tell you and give you commands. This person is your master, he's your leader. And so here we are, and Jesus is saying about verse, uh, verse 46, he's saying, "Why do you call me Lord, Lord? All these people came, he's giving a sermon on the mount and he's preaching to them, he's preaching to the multitudes. And he's telling these people, 'Why do you call me Lord, Lord, and not do the things which I say?'" So we cannot be so easily quick to call Jesus Lord of our lives if we're not letting Him lead us, if we're not letting Him guide us and direct us and tell us which way we need to go. Is he really Lord if we don't obey Him? If we obey Him, we don't, if we obey Him, he's our Lord. If we disobey Him, he's saying, "I don't think so." You, you gotta check that out, reexamine that. Go ahead and read verse 47.
"And so ever come to me and hear my sayings and do them, I will show you to whom he is like."
Whoever comes to me and hears my sayings, so he's saying if you ever, if someone comes to me and they say that I am, you know, they, they entrust me, so they come to me, they're ready to hear what I have to say and they hear what I say and they do them, I will show you whom he is like. So whom is he like, um, Stephanie? Verse 48.
"He is like a man which built a house and digged deep and laid a foundation on a rock. And when the flood rose, the stream beat vehemently upon the house, it could not shake it, it was founded upon a rock."
Stephanie, uh, explain that to us in your uh, understanding. What does it mean that you would be like a man building a house on a, on the foundation of your house is on a rock? Tell me what that means.
I think, well, it's like we're building the foundation is, you know, how you build your foundation in relationship, like you're building your relationship with God. You're starting from the very bottom, the beginning, where you're reading your Bible, you're asking questions to get to know Him, to the, get a firm and solid flooring to build this house, this, wherever, you know, wherever you're trying to get to, to get to the kingdom.
Right. So if we build our house, if we build, if, if, in other words, if we have a plan, right? And the foundation is laid on Jesus Christ, which is the rock, Jesus is the rock, right? He is the rock and His deeds are perfect, is what the, is what the Bible says. So if Jesus is our rock and we lay our plans upon Him, in other words, we come to Him and we ask Him, first off, if Jesus is our Lord, he's saying that he's gonna tell us how to build that house to begin with, correct?
Yep.
So if he is our foundation, we know that we are building our house on a rock, which means that whatever flood comes, the, the, it says, "The stream beat vehemently against that house." So whatever is shaking this house will not make that house fall down. We won't fall if we're, if our foundation is on Jesus Christ. In other words, I think what this is trying to tell us here is that Jesus as our Lord will allow us to succeed. Our, Jesus being our Lord is going to allow us to walk into the promises of God. It's gonna allow us to walk into the things that God has for us. We're going to see ultimate great things happen. We'll see our prayers answered, we'll be in alignment with the Lord. We will see exactly with the will of God, we will see things fall into place because he is our foundation. So if our, if, if we build our lives on Jesus, we have everything we need. Because anything can come and mess up our lives. People die, money is gone. We don't have everything we need all the time, but if he is our foundation, then we are good. And nothing will shake us, nothing, no one will be able to take us out of our positioning of where we are. Does that make sense?
Yep.
And then verse 49, "But he who heard and did nothing..." So Jesus going back, you gotta go back to verse uh, 47 where he says, "Whoever comes to me and hears my sayings does them, I will show you whom he is like." So now he's giving us a second example because the first example was, this person is going to build their house on the foundation, the foundation of the rock. They're gonna build their house on the foundation which is Jesus. And now verse 49 is saying, "But he who heard and did nothing..." He who heard and did nothing. If God spoke to you and gave you a command, if God gave you a, the 10 commandments and you don't listen to them and you do what you wanna do, or you know, he's giving you a complete command, he's told you to go start a ministry, he's told you to start something and you lay dormant, this is what you are like. You are a man who built a house on the earth without a foundation. And against which the stream beat vehemently, vehemently, I'm sorry, this word isn't my strength. And immediately it fell. So in other words, you built your house on earth without a foundation. A house built without a foundation is not gonna stand. And immediately that will fall. And the, and the ruin of that house was great. So it's not only saying that this house fell, the house fell and is ruined. The, the result of the house is, everything is ruined, everything is ruined. There's nothing that you can say that was left over for this person to take, there was nothing good that was left. Everything was ruined. And so if we're not standing on God, it's, yes, especially when we trust in man and we don't trust in God. If we don't trust in God and we trust in man, our house is gone. Our lives are gone. Everything is gone. "But he who heard and did nothing is like a man who built a house on the earth without a foundation, against which the stream beat, and it immediately it fell, and the ruin of that house is great." Does anyone have anything they wanna add to that, um, as far as verse 49? Because I know personally as far as what we just read, that's saying, that if we build our house off, if we listen to the commands of someone else, we trust God, we don't trust God and we trust a man, we trust a person, then the foundation and everything else will fall, it will be horrible. You know, everything will just crumble. Our lives will not be the way that it should if we don't trust in God. So what, what is your uh, take, um, Stephanie? Do you wanna add anything as far as what you just read and what you think as far as verse 49?
No, I think, you know, you really touch on something, you really gotta feel like focus on how relationship with God. Because you know, if we're saying that we love Him and that we trust Him and that our relationship is solid, but yet we're on, you know, shaky ground, we're, we're, you know, landing, putting, you know, our foundation or our sticking sand, like, then we're not really being honest with our, how our shoes are. But yeah, we're looking at other people and judging them.
Yeah. Yeah, so it, it's very important for us to stay grounded, stay rooted in Jesus and to listen to his, his instru, and instructions. You know, the Bible tells, has a lot of instruction on how to live our lives. Proverbs has a whole lot of wisdom and the Bible within itself is wisdom. The more you read it, the more wise you become. The more you spend time with the Lord, the more you're in prayer and devotion and you take time to hear what God has to say, you will become more like Him. I think that is the, the ultimate um, key that we're getting out of this study, is that we need to focus on being intimate with Jesus in the sense where our intimacy allows us to become like Him. Where we start looking like Him, we talk like Him, we look like Him, we resemble Him in every way, in every manner. As we spend more and more time talking with God and we spend time walking with Him, we begin to resemble Him and we take on His nature, His character, we become like Him. We don't necessarily, we can't do the things that He do, we don't have the same power, but we can actually be like Him in a lot of different ways. And the Lord can manifest Himself within us. So if we trust in the Lord and we take the time to spend more time leaning on the rock and we fall on the rock and who is our foundation, we will never fall. So today I hope that was a great study for you, that you were able to get something out of it. And I pray that the Holy, the Holy Spirit resides within you and that you continue to have the intimacy of Jesus Christ flow within your life. Um, so we're gonna have closing prayer and then we're gonna wrap up. Um, do you have any prayer requests that you'd like for me to pray on? Anyone who's on Periscope, anyone, um, Stephanie, you wanna go first and then I'll take the Periscope people?
I pray that, you know, whoever's on the line, I pray for all, whoever's watching, everybody. And um, that, you know, we start paying attention to our foundation.
Yeah.
With our relationship with God.
Yeah, amen, amen. Uh, anyone on Periscope wanna say a prayer request so we can pray for you? Any prayer requests? Alright, so we'll go ahead and pray. Um, Father God, we give you all the glory and all the honor. Father, you are just so good and you're amazing, Lord. We just thank you for being a loving Father, not a Father, a Father who takes the time to give us instruction, a Father who takes the time to redirect us when we're in the wrong. Father, thank you for your word today as we studied um, how you should be the Lord of our lives, how we should be connected to you, how we should be able to pour ourselves in our hearts and our minds and our souls and to be able to connect with you as we would be able to do so many great things for your glory. If only we would just take the time to spend and, and connect and allow the energy that you have for us flow into our lives, Lord. Father, we ask today that you, we actually thank you, Lord, for just being within the study. Thank you for your Holy Spirit giving us the, the understanding, Lord, for the word. And we uh, ask that you forgive us of all of our sins, Lord. Anything that has been within our lives that is not correct. If we've been walking in the wrong direction, if we've been struggling because of our own disobedience, Lord, forgive us. Father, we ask that you wash us clean, that you make us whole. Help us to conform our hearts and our minds to your will. Help us to be able to make decisions based off of what you want us to do and not what we want, Father. May you be our foundation and may we take the time to tell more people about you, Lord, that we wouldn't just um, you know, keep the truth to ourselves, but that we would share the truth with others and that we would have love like you love and we would have patience like you have, that we would be kind like you're kind, Lord. Help us to be able to love those that come, that come across us that are our enemies or if there are people that are persecuting us, Lord, give us the strength and the ability to love like no one could love like you could. Father, we also um, have prayer requests, Lord, that we're praying just for anyone who's listening in tonight. Anyone who's on Periscope, anyone who is on um, the prayer line tonight. We ask that you uh, bless them abundantly, Lord, that you would guide them and keep them, that you would bless them and that you would provide for all of their needs as we know that you will supply all of our needs according to your riches and glory in Christ Jesus. Father, we thank you for just being a great friend and being with us in our studies. And thank you for always- Father, we thank you for just being a great friend and being with us in our studies and thank you for always revealing yourselves to us. We pray all these things, not because we deserve any glory, but because of your Son, Jesus Christ. In Jesus' name we pray, amen. Alright guys, thank you so much for joining us tonight. Hopefully we will be able to get back on YouTube um for next week and Periscope, hopefully. Um and I hope this was a blessing to you and may you have a great Sabbath. Have a good night.